Good afternoon, I'm calling our board meeting to order at four o'clock. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to your republic which stands one nation on earth.
Thank you. Alright, I need approval of the agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is public comment. We have no public here. Okay, moving on. Now, we're at the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is the director's report. Scott, since you're filling in for...
Sure, so her report is in the packet and she didn't ask me to highlight anything specific, but if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Any question? Paul?
I didn't see in the report any about your 3D printer night.
Wow, well, I thank you for asking about that. It went absolutely awesome. We had over fifty people show up, I think fifty-three, fifty-five was the final count. All age ranges. You know, there was a three-year-old girl who was finger up the nose most of the time, but she seemed engaged, asked good questions. And then we had also some senior folks and everybody had a really good time, stuck around to the very end, and it was really well-received. We also had a little list at the front, people could sign up to ask for more information. They wanted to have further training and stuff, and we had like fifteen people sign up. So, a lot of good interest. As part of that presentation, we did give vouchers to the attendees to come back to the library and actually use the printers, and we're starting to see those come back. So, it was a very good thing, and we've already gotten some requests to do another one in the fall. So, we'll plan on doing that.
Thanks for doing that.
It was great, it was a lot of fun.
Alright, Susan, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks Mary Lee. Scott, I wondered, Michelle had talked at the last board meeting about the board doing some advocacy or reaching out to legislators. And I know she attended the Northern Michigan Policy Conference. I'm not sure if you did, but did you hear anything about how that went?
I didn't attend, and Michelle did not brief me on it, so I would not feel comfortable answering more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Joe?
Scott, I don't know if this is fair to ask you, but I noticed on the way in, there's a lot of ice on this side of the building again. Are we aware, I know we're aware of it, but is there any ideas of what's causing it?
So, I haven't been out today, but I do know that we've had some serious issues with the weather lately.
Yeah.
On Sunday, we had to briefly shut down our return lane just because the ice mounds were building up so fast. I know that our facility manager has been in contact with the people that we work with to mitigate those things. But beyond that, I don't have specifics about what might be causing other than it's been quite a winter.
I just thought we had gone a long ways towards solving that.
Yeah, me too.
Now, this is the coldest winter we've had in a couple of years, maybe we didn't make so much progress.
You know, my office is over part of that area, so I see it coming back myself. And I'm like, I haven't seen that in a while, so...
You can tell Brunt will have questions for him at our finance and facilities meeting.
And he'll, I bet you he'll have the answers, he's pretty sharp.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Oh, Susan, thank you.
Thanks, Mary Lee. Scott, I know this is right up your alley. I read the minutes from the Policy and Personnel Committee. Can you just real simply explain what a Tor relay is?
Thank you for asking.
Sure thing, so Tor is an acronym, it stands for the Onion Router. And what the idea is, is it's a type of technology that allows you to browse the internet more anonymously. And what a Tor relay basically will do is it will take your traffic and it will pretty much shuffle it so that if you were trying to track it across the networks, a request from your computer would go, let's say, to Germany, and then it would bounce to here at the library, and then it would bounce to another place before it actually reached the site you were trying to reach. And with that technology, it basically allows your internet activity to be extremely hard to monitor, almost impossible. So, think of it as just a way to shuffle around where anyone watching would think your internet traffic came from.
Okay, so it's a security, increased security for us?
It would be more for any patrons or community members who wanted to use the Tor network. People internally could use it if they wanted, but it's more privacy than necessarily security.
So, how do we get access, how would a patron get access to it?
They would either use, if we chose to do this, we would either install the Tor browser on the computers in here, or anyone from home could install the Tor browser on their computer, and their traffic could be routed through our relay or it could be routed through a relay somewhere else. It's all sort of designed to be somewhat random to increase the likelihood that no one could trace it back.
Okay, so in effect, what we're saying is that anyone can use the Tor network if they have a browser. The proposal or the consideration that we were giving was to whether or not the panel should be a node on the Tor network.
Correct, we were approached by a community member who was interested in us basically supporting this technology, and that was the ask, was to host a relay here at the library.
Would it involve costs?
Beyond the minimum amount of staff time that it would take to set up, no. Basically just software, we'd run it on a server we already have. It would take a percent of our bandwidth that we could control, so we could say you only get five percent. Or we could say you get five percent, but if no one else is using anything, you get the full amount. There's many ways to configure it, but for costs, no, there wouldn't be any costs. I will say that I think the plan was, the committee we had presented to about this idea had asked the community member and anybody else who was interested in this to come back and give a presentation about why they were interested in this. And I know that she's in the process of getting that group together to give that presentation. So, I think that there'll be opportunities to learn more about this, you know, in the next couple of months, a lot more.
Jennifer?
Thank you so much, Scott, for that. And when that community member comes back to talk about it, maybe another element of the discussion that could be helpful or supportive is like this idea around costs, because there's a direct, there's a minimal direct cost, as I'm hearing you say. And there's some risk, and so like what are the potential costs of the risks? Like, what do we know about that?
I did cover that a little bit in the notes that I gave the committee meeting, but Tor, like anything that can be used for privacy. Privacy can be used to protect noble things or can be used to protect, you know, not-so-noble uses. So, you know, activists who are part of, you know, doing important journalism in areas where human rights are at risk use Tor to protect themselves from being, you know, swooped up in the middle of the night by, you know, people who are in uniforms. But people also can use Tor to buy drugs, human trafficking, terrorism. So, there's a lot of negative connotations with the positive connotations. And in that paper, I just thought it was very important that if the board and the library were to take this step, that they came into it well-aware of any potential pushbacks they might get and be prepared to defend the decision in that context. So, that will be an important part of the presentation that we give. The community member will talk about that, about why she sees the value, and we'll go over the potential risks quite clearly because I will be around to help. Be, I'll be the person that does a lot of the mitigation of those risks and is the person that if anything does kind of go wrong, I'll be probably one of the first people notified about it. So, I'm also very, very invested in making sure that we go into this with wide, open eyes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No question, but just a framing of that. The discussion in the committee was primarily, I thought most, about the general immediate questions regarding risk, reputational, security, et cetera, et cetera. But there's also, in order to consider this request from patron community, it raises questions about what is the nature and function of the library as a node on the internet already? And we already exist in a space and provide service within that space, within that technology space. And so, to what is the Tor network a response? So, what are the risks that people, and some people in the community feel like institutions currently using communication technologies already experience? And so, here's, maybe these people are out over their skis on this, I have no idea, but nonetheless, it raises interesting questions about what is the nature and purpose of the library? And why is there something about the current situation and the trend toward centralization and surveillance? Something that we should be at least aware of in our conversation, so. So, anyway, the point was, they need to come and talk to us more because we don't really know what they're talking about right now. But it seems like a question we should not just dismiss.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on, on old business, federal holidays. And that was your...
I think it was Sam.
Oh, Sam's, but yeah.
We had, yeah, we had a very robust discussion, I think, in the committee about this, and we could not, we didn't really reach a consensus, we, I think we had a good discussion, but I thought we kind of came up with the idea that maybe we should have this discussion for the full board and see everybody's thoughts on it. I can synthesize mine, I guess, in that I brought the issue up because, for a variety of reasons, but us as a sort of a premier secular institution in this area, and we have this secular federal holiday that's recognized by the post office, by the city. You know, should we, as the district library, make that a paid holiday? It's not well-established nationally, so we don't have a lot of activities on that day, like MLK Day, when we have, you know, a lot of responsibilities to the community to serve on that day in particular. But, you know, in a supportive action to sort of signal very broadly that we're welcoming community, a welcoming place, give this holiday sort of the profile, and profile that it might deserve, and given our history as a region of kind of slow-walking the MLK holiday over time and some of the damage that that can do to our reputation, would it be worth our time to say to the community that we'll be closed that day in honor of this holiday and raise awareness and treat our staff to that day and that type of thing? So, I'm generally in favor of closing that day, but I don't certainly, I understand that, you know, there's other alternatives and things that can be done besides closing. So, I suppose I just would leave it all to you and be interested in your thoughts if you thought it was worth closing down for that day and giving the staff the day off and making that signal.
In your discussion, I know that Michelle mentioned it, but what about the negotiated holidays that we already have in our contract? How would those come into...
My understanding was, you know, yeah, but we're not asking for a concession or anything back from the union. It would just be giving another day.
And would that other day be amended to their union contract? Scott, do you know the answer?
I believe that would, something that would have to be negotiated. But that was what Michelle had indicated, I believe, in the meeting.
So, what do people think? Oh, Susan, thank you. I keep forgetting there's a hand.
Thanks, Mary Lee. I really appreciate that Sam has brought this to the board, and I echo many of his comments. I put this out to my network, and most of the people said they wanted us to stay open for whatever research that's worth. And I really wasn't sure where to go with this, so in the last couple of days, I decided to call the King Center in Atlanta and ask them what they think about public libraries closing. And I didn't get anyone who was willing to speak for the center, but one of the things that came out of those conversations, and if you go to their website, it's really quite fascinating. And I was able at a conference in DC a lot of years ago to meet a couple of his adult children. They're willing to partner with us on programming. So, we could really do something incredible next year and really do something that shows our respect and forward-thinking. And we can tie this in with our strategic plan and go from there. But I was really encouraged with how, what a great conversation we had. That's it.
So, when you said you sent it out to your network, how many responses did you get back, yea or nay?
Probably seventy-five percent were nay to closing. And I sent it out to probably at least a couple hundred people.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, Jennifer?
I also want to echo thanks to Sam for bringing this up and to Susan for doing some additional outreach and research around it. I support Sam's position that by closing on Juneteenth, we're sending a message about the priority of the holiday, what it means, the significance of it. And I also think that if there isn't consensus for that, maybe there is another way that's... Maybe there's another way to recognize this that goes beyond just having a program for that day. Maybe it's a program and offering a floating holiday to people who work here or something like that, if there's not consensus on the board. But I do think that honoring it and putting sort of our, you know, what do they say? Like in a capitalist society, like you show love with money. You're, a budget is a reflection of values, and the way we spend our money is a reflection of our values. So, I do think that there is some significance in, number one, closing, and number two, offering, sort of acknowledging that this is a priority to the people who work here as well, as a reflection of the values of the board.
Sam, I have a question for you. So, are you recommending closing for MLK and Juneteenth?
No, I think, you know, from my perspective when looking at it, there's so much programming done on MLK, plus we have the TCAPS considerations and different things that go on in the community. And being that it's already so well-established, but Juneteenth, we didn't seem to have a very robust... And we do do some events, and I'm not being critical of the events that we do, but it seemed an opportunity to make it a different kind of statement. Because I feel like for MLK Day, we do a very nice job. I will, I should say the staff does a very nice job in creating programs and doing community outreach, facilitating discussions and that type of thing. But for Juneteenth, my thought was that the establishment of the holiday has been somewhat rocky. It's received in a way that's sometimes derogatory or sometimes dismissive. And being that it's already, the lead has already been taken by making it a federal and state holiday, that it seems like we're lagging at the local level in being, sort of having that same recognition. So, this would be a way for us to acknowledge, recognize, honor, you know, in those ways by closing on that day, when it wouldn't be a very big hardship to the community. Is that we don't have a lot of events, it's not during the school year. It seemed a different way to recognize and to make that statement.
Anybody else have any other comments, or does anybody want to make a motion?
I don't want to make a motion, but I would add to the comments. The, what I was trying to, in the meeting, characterize was, in my own mind, trying to reconcile the tension between what I had called a question regarding the way in which the library prioritizes and creates program around, programming around, recognizing particular communities, marginalized communities, communities of concern, communities of care, whatever we decide to do within our programming frame, operational frame. There's that question, to what extent are we prioritizing and being effective in that programming? And then the second piece, the question I had about the proposal of closing for Juneteenth was whether or not, was a utility question, and what is the utility? What is the actual likelihood of a, of an outcome that we desire coming from the strategy of closing on the, on Juneteenth? As opposed to, for example, going back up to number one and making it a programming and a priority question, where we think about MLK and Juneteenth being two recognized program opportunities for the library to link and develop programming in ways that actually address the driver here, which is Sam's concern, and is that maybe we could do more to be on the forefront of encouraging the kind of thoughtful reflection, learning that we, you know, should be promoting in general. I don't think the library has to be construed as a singular programming unit for cultural change, I mean, but it's certainly an instrument that affects the way people feel about their community and so on. So, for me, it was a question about whether closing the library for Juneteenth is an effective way of accomplishing the goal that I hear working underneath here. And Sam has good responses to that, and I think people have, can have their own points of view about it. I don't feel like it's necessarily the strongest way that we can accomplish that goal, that closing. We don't close for MLK, and you can make the same, if not a stronger, argument for it as a day to close in order to recognize and so on. But that track is, it trains further down the track than Juneteenth is, and I understand Sam's argument in regard. So, what I was trying to do is think, if we make this decision, if we're going to go this way, versus a holiday that we've not been asked by the employees to recognize, it's coming from the board, and then, so the board must respond to the question about the utility of that as a strategy for achieving the library's main goals. Because it's a programming thing as much as anything else. I don't think that's our primary function, but, you know. So, anyway, I have a different tension, I have a different, you know, dragon in my head on this, you know? And I, so I support the general premise, I support the idea, I'm not sure I support the tool. I'm not sure, that's why we wanted to bring it up. Bring it up, take it back, you know, and see if we want to continue to talk about it. We're going on it, whatever you want to do.
Susan?
Thanks, Mary Lee. I have a point on the macro and the micro level. On the micro level, I have no idea whether we'd be handing out food that day. I know Michelle has said we're going to be involved in the Food for America program again. And I think on the macro level, that I don't have a sense, working with policy committee, that we have a framework for how we make these decisions. And I'd like us to have a way to really know how we decide this. And I tried to do a fair amount of research on how libraries make this decision and still needed more time to get into that. I don't know if there's anybody else on the board that can speak to that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we close on in observation of the Juneteenth holiday. We recommend to do that.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, all those in favor of closing on June?
Discussion. Discussion.
Oh, sorry. Discussion.
I'm feeling like there's more I want to say about the moment we're in. And I'm actually persuaded by this conversation that it's not effective to do like the halfway thing that closing sends a strong message in the current context nationally that we're in, which is tricky to talk about. But, like, we're at a time when people are trying to ban books, to erase the history of our country, the fact of slavery.
Absolutely.
And so, to, to take a stand in this way, which is a form of acknowledgement that's sort of ingrained in our calendar, feels relevant and important. And so, yeah, like after hearing from Sam, after hearing the discussion, I do think that, like, going the full way makes, I feel strongly in support of Sam's motion.
Joe?
I think, I think by closing, we remove ourselves from being a positive influence in the community. You know, we're just saying, hey, we're closed today, it's a holiday. We can't say, go out and do good works because we really haven't been, that hasn't been the structure of Juneteenth. I'm really not sure why we would want to celebrate Juneteenth. I recognize that that's when the slaves in Texas were first informed that they had been set free by the proclamation. And that is something worth celebrating, but closing the building and, and, you know, that's our recognition of the day, to me, that doesn't go anywhere. It's not far enough. We should stay open and have a program or programs to educate about that.
Paul?
Yeah, I feel similarly that we have responsibility to educate about this subject, and we do more good, and we can't dictate from the board what can be done on it, but I know that the staff is more than capable of finding creative ways to broadening people's understanding of what it is. And I'm sure we'd all be willing to try and help with that. So, closing the doors doesn't seem effective enough, although I understand the desire behind it, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I would riff on what Jennifer just said. I don't know if I take it in a different way, but what I love about the question that we're talking about right now is that Sam has articulated a perspective about the library and its importance and the community that I think is not, that is profoundly important. And that we are called to, in addressing that question, really consider with the library staff who have to deliver any and all program, what, if anything, can we be doing to, it comes back to Jennifer, to meet this moment? Where what I would consider to be a clear and present danger of erasing history, going backwards, sliding down the slope again, to become benighted in a whole new way. That is, that is a non-trivial thing, and that is exactly the thing that a public library exists to address. So, having raised this question has, I think, raised the deeper, more important question. My only response to the particular thing here is, I'm not quite sure we understand how we should be, as a library, thinking about our opportunities in this regard, to say that closing for Juneteenth would be, you know, into what, you know, what overall sense and strategy does it fit? I mean, how does it fit in with our overall plan to do more, do less, whatever, encourage, support the library, whatever it is we do? And so, I just don't feel, I don't want to, like, tape the package shut with a closing for Juneteenth. I don't, I don't think that's the intent here, but I just think it's too big to settle that way.
If I might?
Stand, Sam.
I, you know, just to comment on that a bit... I, you know, just to, just to comment on that a bit, I do think there's a powerful statement when you say that you're a close and observance of a holiday, and we do, there is some state, existing, you know, we have holidays that we observe, that we make that statement about. So I don't feel that we're totally doing into new territory here. I mean, we're closed for Memorial Day, we're closed for Labor Day, to honor our war dead, to honor our labor force, to honor, you know, the Christmas tradition, the Thanksgiving holiday. So we, we do have, there is some structure in place, I would say already, to say that these are important sacred secular holidays that should be maintained and observed. And I think being closed and observance of a holiday is more than just shutting the doors, it's saying that this is a, a community value in a community institution. That's the perspective I was, was coming from, and I respect certainly all viewpoints on this, and I know there are many ways to honor things, and I would never take anybody, you know, that they weren't in well intentioned in that regard, but that was the perspective I took that, you know, I always find it somewhat humorous when you see, come down to our Labor Day sale, you know? And, you know, you've got all these people working to honor America's labor force who have to work on Labor Day while somebody else gets the day off. So I mean, I think, you know, like there's some kind of, there's something to say about this is important, let's treat it as important.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
Yeah, thanks very much. I, I guess I wonder if we're going to be open on MLK Day but closed on Juneteenth, what message we're giving the community?
That's a rhetorical question?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'm going to weigh in, usually, you know, I don't. I think, I'm not in support of the motion, but I am absolutely in support of doing planning programs, coordinating, let's say, like the Dennis Museum, or with other nonprofit associations, do that for a couple of years, and then revisit this again. I do understand what you're saying, Sam. I just think at this point, there's so little information about it, in, especially in our area, that I think we need to do more programming, more, I mean, more displays, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I do like the fact that we're discussing this, I think this is absolutely important, and I appreciate you for bringing it forward. So half in agreement, half in doubt. Jennifer?
I just wanted to add a reflection, and I'm also appreciating the robust conversation and the thoughtful conversation from everyone here. And I wanted to point out that by Sam introducing this, it's a disruption that's caused the conversation, which is different than, you know, putting up a display and saying, this is Juneteenth, this is how we're going to educate you about Juneteenth. Certainly there are books in the library about that, for people who want to seek out that information. But causing a disruption, in this case, which is the closure, in addition to what Sam said about observing and honoring a group of people in the same way that we do veterans or, you know, working people, the disruption also can accelerate learning about the issue of slavery in the United States, because the disruption will cause questions and disagreements and this very rich level of conversation that we're able to engage in on a board today. So I'm grateful for today's conversation, and if the votes aren't here to, you know, move forward today, I'm also hopeful for continued conversation in the, in this area, and I appreciate the disruption, Sam, that you've introduced.
I've been accused of being disruptive before, so.
All right, seeing no other hands raised, looks like we're ready for a vote, and the vote is to close the library on Juneteenth, Juneteenth.
Doesn't have to be all.
Oh, that's right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. All right, but thank you very much.
Can I make a, just a, just a final comment or another, reinforce, underline my gesture of appreciation for Sam's heartfelt and well-articulated framing of this, this question, this debate. I like the, I like the disruption frame, I think that makes a lot of sense. For me, though, it goes the other way, and it's, well, yeah, that's exactly it, I mean, so if we are really concerned here, how do we really use that to cause some disruption around June nineteenth, around Juneteenth, to, you know, to, to make that work? Closing may be the strategy, I don't know, but I don't think we've thought through it enough for me yet to, to do it. I, I don't say, this, this don't cut this off, this is not the end of a debate, it's the, it's the beginning of the consideration of these, these questions. So I, I, just a word of appreciation for that.
I would like the, the notes to reflect that we had an intense discussion about this, and would strongly recommend that there be significant planning for this event, or for this day in this June. Okay, moving on with the agenda. All right. Next on the agenda is Earn Sick Time Act, and Scott, are you, oh, Danielle, you're going to speak to it, thank you.
Yes, I've been following it for quite some time.
Okay.
If you've read Michelle's board memo, oh, and I'd like to introduce myself, Danielle Baldwin, finance and HR manager. Her memo goes into the history of what had happened with the Paid Medical Leave Act and the Earn Sick Time Act. As it stands right now, the Michigan Supreme Court last summer reversed a amendment to the ESTA, and, and it's effective February twenty first, twenty twenty five, which is tomorrow. But since that time, the House, both the House and the Senate in Michigan have been in discussions to amend it again. There are significant issues with the law as it's written that causes a lot of problems for especially small businesses, so there's been a lot of lobbying in that regard. So right now, as of three forty-five, the Senate was still discussing it. So they're going to, I, I was told that they're going to be late into the night talking about this. It's currently, there's a House bill four zero zero two that is tiebarred with a House and Senate passed bill that is, that is Senate Bill eight, that represents minimum wage and tipped employees. It was the same thing, it was an adopt and amend that happened in twenty eighteen. So they've passed that, but it's not going to go into effect unless the Senate passes the House bill. So that said, we don't really know what to do. And we had some draft language for, to amend our employee handbook, but even as, as most recently as yesterday, we found out in a new FAQ from the state, from the law, the LEO, what's LEO stand for? Law and Employment Organiz-, Labor and Economic Opportunity, I think, Agency? They have an FAQ discussing the bill and how to implement it for employers, guidelines, basically, and one of them just said that, one, one that came out yesterday was that the current law as it stands, if it's implemented tomorrow, does not allow any annual PTO payout, which we just implemented with our staff, and that went over very well with our staff. And so we need to see how this all shakes out before we can make any changes to the handbook. And so the memo is asking to give Michelle the authorization to implement any, any handbook changes to be in compliance with the law.
Jennifer?
I had a question for clarity.
Yeah.
I think I heard you explain, like touch on this, and I understand in your really good memo about how the collective bargaining, employees covered by the collective bargaining agreement won't be impacted immediately, but it's all the non-represented employees, managers, et cetera, that would be immediately impacted. Is the view that the impact would be like a, a net takeaway for those employees?
No, it would be, it would be a gain for all employees, that, a gain.
Can you explain that a little bit more? Like, what is the impact on the employees if this goes into effect?
The employees that are not currently represented by the collective bargaining agreement are the salaried exempt employees and the irregular employees, we call them, those are our pages and our desk attendants. And so our, the, the irregular employees do not receive paytime off of any kind right now, whether it's sick or vacation or combined pool. So they would be able to accrue, as of the law right now, and I, and, and the bills that are up for debate right now are not changing this accrual rate. It's, they would accrue one hour of sick leave per thirty hours that they work. So a lot of our employees work about fifteen hours a week, and so they would accrue about twenty-six hours per year, and that would give them, you know, almost two weeks of their pay that they would normally, you know, if they're out for sick, for two weeks sick, they could still receive that pay. And then for our management, we, right now, initially, we had thought that we were going to keep one pool of vacation and sick leave, it's our, our PTO pool, but because of the information that we found out yesterday that we could not do an annual payout of any of the hours within that pool, and there is no accrual limit, I want to make that known too. So right now, our PTO banks have an accrual limit of five hundred and sixty hours. Once you reach that, you don't accrue anymore until you've used that, that vacation time. But you could, you could go up to two thousand, three thousand hours, you know, if you, if you never get sick and never take vacation, you could continue to, to receive that. So that is a significant liability for when someone terminates the, the library, we would owe that payout to them. So we are considering separating that into vacation and sick leave. We would keep the accrual rate at one hour for every thirty hours worked for sick leave, and we would keep the vacation time what it currently is now. So it would be a gain, a net gain for the salaried employees as well. And then in negotiations with the collective bargaining group, we would, we would talk about that as well with them.
Thank you. I need a line drawing.
Yeah.
Mike, and then, and then Sam, right?
This is kind of, please. No, please.
No, you're first, Sam's next.
This is kind of what I want, so I apologize if it's stupid. I'm, I'm confused about why we're taking this up right now. It's, it's like we're being asked to authorize a possible response to legislative process with an uncertain outcome, and I, I wondered, what do we lose by just waiting to see where it lands and then responding?
Well, from what I understand, Michelle, does, the director does not have the authority to make changes to the employee manual without the board's approval. And so we would need to bring that to you. If, if, if there was no problems with this law, and people weren't upset about it, and, and bills were being considered in the legislature, then we would have brought this to you last month, and we would have had our employee handbook ready, ready to be implemented the date the law started.
Well, I, I understand, I understand that.
Oh, okay.
But that's, what we're authorizing is a change that we have to authorize, right? But do we have to authorize it before we know what the change is? So the question is, if, what's wrong with the regular order? If that happens, we have to change the handbook, then we bring it to the board and we change it. I mean, so why, I, I'm confused, and it, so it makes me wonder if I'm really missing some urgency here that, you know, kind of is my problem, because I'm not getting it. Why are we being asked to, if I understand correctly?
Sort of presuppose.
The, the labor agreement would have to be amended almost immediately because the legislation would go into effect tomorrow. We've, I've been sitting through some legislative updates with our clerks association, and they're all having a mini panic attack because this, as it's currently written, applies to like volunteer, on-call firefighters, and election workers, and people that you wouldn't think. So there's a, like, a litany of legislative fixes that are being, like, thrown at this right now. So I don't see how we have any choice but to give flexibility to her to, we, because they, you know, apparently anything could come of this tomorrow, and we'd be in a drastically different labor environment, vis a vis the employees, as of tomorrow morning.
And Michael, if you.
Am I, am I on the right track?
Yeah, yeah, you are on the right track with that. Depending on what is decided tonight, late into the night, with the Senate approving the House bill, we don't, we don't have a policy ready to give to you to approve that so that it becomes, because it will become effective immediately. So we don't have that ready to give to you to approve today in case it is law tomorrow. And then if, if the current law, if nothing happens tonight, and the current law goes into effect tomorrow, and then two weeks from now, they pass other legislation that's effective immediately, then we would have to wait two weeks to meet with you to get that approved, and we, when we should be complying with the law immediately.
So, wait, I have a question. So wait a minute, so the Senate has to vote on it, is my understanding?
Yes.
If they choose, if they choose to not succeed with it, I mean, the vote goes negative, then this is null and void.
Then their bills don't move forward to amend the law, the law goes into effect tomorrow.
That what?
And, so that if they don't know tonight, the bill to amend the law that is going to be effective tomorrow will not move forward, it will not be amended, and so it will be state law effective tomorrow with no amendments.
Based on what the Supreme Court?
Oh.
And then our current policy is out of compliance with the law, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that helps, because I've read it a few times, and with, hmm. Okay, any, yeah.
Would you read the motion?
Sure. The motion says something about the policy changes attached to this memo. We had thought that we would be able to have something ready for you, but as of yesterday, we cannot. So I would, I would word it a little differently. The direct, so the suggested motion would be, the director be authorized to implement necessary policy changes to ensure compliance with the law in the event that the Earn Sick Time Act, or ESTA, is implemented on February twenty first, twenty twenty five, as currently written, or if the implementation date is delayed and/or if ESTA is amended, the director be authorized to delay the policy implementation date as appropriate and/or make the necessary and appropriate changes to tattle policies to ensure compliance with the law in whatever form it is ultimately implemented. The changes to the employee manual shall be presented at the following board meeting for board approval.
So Danielle, what you just read is a little bit different what's in our minutes, or in our, in our.
Yes, yeah, because there's nothing attached to the memo.
All right. Are there any other questions?
We can't, we can't act in an illegal way. We can't, we can't do something illegal. So whatever happens on whatever date, that whatever decision is made by whatever body on these questions, we have to be in compliance legally.
Yes.
And the problem is, we've got policies that would put us out of compliance in some circumstances, right?
Right.
So if we're saying, yes, we'd like the director to ensure that we continue to remain in legal compliance with the law as it, as it changes, until such time we have, and then we make the changes in policy to make that, make that formal. I, I'm just, I mean, I'm not against this, I mean, I, I think the logic of it is sound, right? Let's enable Michelle to do what needs to be done. But we, by, by definition, this is the decision that the board has to authorize the director to do, and we're authorizing an action that we don't know. I think that's bad policy, authorizing something that we don't know what we're authorizing. We don't have, I actually asked when we got this thing, what is this language that we're supposed to be looking at here? There is nothing to look at. So we're, we're authorizing, we're authorizing action, and I'm. So we're, we're authorizing, we're authorizing action, and I'm, and I'm, I'm in favor of it. I would vote for it if we're going to raise it, I'll vote for it. I'm just saying, I don't think it's good practice to authorize something that we're responsible for authorizing when we don't know what it is we're authorizing. I mean, as a general practice, I wouldn't want to extend that to any and all circumstances.
That's okay. All right, we've got Joe and Jennifer.
This is the first time I ever heard of a law being passed and becoming effective immediately, which requires companies and citizens of the, of the state to run out and change whatever their policy is. Usually, don't they say, hey, we passed this, it's going to become effective at the first of the year? And that is what usually gives people time to respond to any change in the law. But you're saying because the Supreme Court made this, or posited this decision, we have to match it by tomorrow?
The Supreme Court made this decision last summer, and there was attempts over the fall during the lame duck session to, to make changes to it. But as you know, not very much moved forward during that session. Immediately beginning January first, or it's January second, the Senate and House started discussing ways to make changes, to, to put together amendments to the law. And it's been slow going.
And it, and it's the Supreme Court of Michigan?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Jennifer?
I have a, um, just a couple of thoughts. First, I really appreciate, Mike, your framing around, like, are, we're voting on something that we don't have the information for? And we're, we're, we're being asked to vote on something that even though we didn't want it to go into effect, was approved in the summer. And we think it might change. But I too feel that, like, discomfort of voting on something that we don't have the documentation to even know what was fully passed in the summer. Knowing that we're hoping that the Senate is going to approve changes, but we know that the Senate might not approve changes too. And we, I don't know that we've ever been asked to give conditional approval about things we hope might happen. But we don't know if they're going to happen. So my question is, from a legal perspective, I think Mike brings up like a really good frame. It's like, we're required to follow the law. So if the law is effective tomorrow, we're going to require the, follow the law, could we then approve retroactively whatever happened so that we have a full understanding before we're asked to vote? So that's my first question. And then my second is more of a comment, which is, apart from the specific legislation, it's more of a value that, like, I think that it's important to provide paid sick leave to employees. So as I, as we're becoming aware that there are employees who don't currently have paid sick leave, if this doesn't go into effect, it would be interesting to revisit that, both from a values perspective and a health and safety perspective of people interacting with people in the library.
Uh, Joe?
I have to, I have to get a clarification. Do we have employees today that don't get paid time off or sick time?
Yes.
And those employees are part-time employees?
Yes.
They don't, they don't make enough, they don't work enough hours in order to qualify for that benefit?
Correct.
With this change, are they going to be qualified to get those benefits?
Yes.
They will. Are they temporary employees or on-call employees?
No. And even on-call employees, like our substitutes, would require, we would be required to provide them sick leave accruals.
Wait, so you're saying, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if it's the microphone or what.
Okay.
So you're saying on-call and temporary people would have the same, they would also benefit, they would also get the benefit of paid sick leave?
They would. There is a circumstance that you don't not have, you do, you have to allow them to accrue. Speaking of temporary employees, at the moment, we, you have to allow them to accrue sick leave, but you don't have to allow them to use any of it before ninety days. So if they leave employment within ninety days, they accrue it, but it doesn't ever get used. For our on-call, they're not truly on-call because our substitutes can, can deny a shift. They don't, they're not required to take a shift if someone calls in sick. But for our substitutes, they are long-term employees. They work anywhere between five and nineteen hours per week depending, and it fluctuates the entire year. They would earn sick leave.
All right. I'll tell you what, this sounds like a Dr. Seuss story to me. I'm trying to figure this out. Paul?
If I can try and summarize the conflict. We don't know what the, what could possibly happen today in the Senate. But regardless of that, we have a conflict with our policy statement. So what we're authorizing, Michelle to do, the director to do, is to act on our behalf until we can come back in our next meeting and approve it. So we're saying, Michelle, act in our best interest because we don't have the ability to do so because of the timing of this.
Okay, that, that helps a lot.
Danielle, what do you think?
I think that's really accurate, yeah.
All right, Mike?
Can I actually, I, I will make a friendly amendment to try to, to try to state that.
Okay.
I hate doing this, so follow me here.
Okay.
It's all on video.
I know.
I would make-
I've got a chum. Yeah, no, we have, no.
I'll make a friendly amendment since we have right now. So I would suggest this motion. The director be authorized to make necessary changes, to make, to make necessary and appropriate changes to TADA policies to ensure compliance with the law in the event that ESTA is amended in a way that would, that would make current policy, TADA policy out of compliance. The changes to the employee manual should be, will, shall be presented at the following board meeting, meeting at the, for board approval. So all we're saying is we're authorizing to her to do whatever necessary to make sure we're in compliance.
I think a temporary authorization is called for in this case due to the extraordinary legislative-
It shall expire on midnight.
Can you be funny? Don't confuse me anymore. Okay, all right. So the motion on the floor, can you read it one more time and then we'll vote?
If I can follow my arrows. The suggestion motion is that the director be authorized to make necessary and appropriate changes to TADA policies to ensure compliance with the law in the event that ESTA is amended in a way that would make current policy out of compliance. The changes to the employee manual, necessary changes to the employee manual should be presented at the following board meeting for board approval. Second.
Okay.
Or in the following future board meeting.
Mary Lee, may I?
All right.
Um, in, in, hearing that again, I noticed that it basically reads the same way that it's in there now, except it removes the part that if it's implemented as currently stated in law. So it's just if it's, Michael, you're, it was just if it's amended tonight. So we do need something from the board that says if it's implemented as currently written.
So you're saying, you're suggesting that that be added to?
If we're not out of compliance, we don't need to change anything.
As it's currently written-
The normal process.
As it's currently written in the law that's effective tomorrow, we will be out of compliance tomorrow.
So if this is amended in a way that puts us out of compliance, then we'd like the director to do something about that. Bring us back-
But the current law as it is going to be implemented puts us out of compliance.
To align, yeah.
Right.
So we're saying that she, we should, we should, she should act, bring our policy into alignment with that new legal reality.
Wait.
Okay. So I think I'm understanding, Danielle, the crux is that regardless of what the legislature does tonight, there will be a change in law starting tomorrow, and that change will bring us out of compliance. And so maybe the friendly amendment to propose is to, because what you're saying, Michael, is if the law is amended tonight, in the event that the law is amended tonight, or the law, the current law goes into effect tomorrow. Because both of those are things that would put us out of compliance. Is, and so we would have to authorize Michelle to act. Does that make sense?
Well, you could also just say, in the event that ESTA may, brings the, TADA, uh, means, brings TADA's current policy out of, out of compliance.
Even better.
You don't even talk about amended. I, I know what, you know what I hate about this conversation is we're really trying to ride wild braco of the Michigan legislature, right? You want to get out ahead, you want to get ahead of that game?
I know.
That's just nuts, right? So I, I don't, you know, choosing which verbs to use and how to string them together, it seems to me, that's why I'm uncomfortable with approving it, because I don't know what's going to happen after tonight, who knows? You know, so I, I don't, I don't know. But I'm willing to say, happy to propose that we make it clear to Michelle that she represents the library's interest in remaining in compliance with ESTA. Regardless of the outcome of that, I mean, I, the shortest possible way of saying that. And that may, that means she can do whatever is necessary to maintain that relationship between TADA and the law.
Okay.
Okay, so someone's got to say that in a succinct sentence or two.
Mike?
Well, I'm sorry, but doesn't the original-
I've just seen it, read it.
Doesn't the original amendment serve the purposes for giving Michelle the flexibility in any event of the vote tonight or any lack thereof without, without the friendly amendment? Just simply because the status quo is already going to put us, we're going to be illegal as of tomorrow morning. So I'm not sure we would even really need, I mean, I think we, if we approve the motion as it stands, it's a temporary authorization that we could come back and clean up next meeting or discuss, you know, more generally. But I think the motion as written gives the temporary authorization and the flexibility that we have to have to prevent the worst possible outcome.
All right, but, but as written is not what Danielle is saying, because you made some changes to it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, as written, you could just take out the attached to this memo part.
Yeah, that's the first thing I struck. And I said, well, why don't I just keep striking?
Okay, all right, all right. Danielle, can you say it? Can you do the, the motion one more time?
Okay.
And I think either you need to pick up your microphone or something.
Okay, I can hear myself really loud, so I, I, I don't want to talk any louder, but is this better?
No, talk loud.
This is better, okay. It's like ringing in my ears, okay. So the suggestion, suggested motion is the director be authorized to implement the policy changes in the event ESTA is implemented on February twenty-first, 2025 as written, or if the implementation date is delayed and/or if ESTA is amended, the director be authorized to delay the policy implementation date as appropriate and/or make the necessary and appropriate changes to TADA policies to ensure compliance with the law in whatever form it is ultimately implemented. The changes to the employee manual shall be presented at the following board meeting for board approval.
Okay. All right. Hearing all of that, are you ready to take a vote? And is this a money thing?
It's not.
Well, somebody has to make the motion.
I would make, I would make the, I would make the motion that what she said.
Okay, all right, just a second.
I'll say it.
All right. So this is an up or down one? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Hearing nothing, motion carries. Thank you very, very much, Danielle. You get a pay raise for that.
No, we got Gil Ratch.
That was resounding. I tried to get your day off, but.
Yeah. Oh, man. Yeah, I'm used to, at big meetings where, where it goes right up on the board so you can see it, that. Trying to visualize that? Okay. All right, next on the business is a request from, or a motion we need to talk about, Dollar General Youth Literacy Grant Application Approval.
Yes.
And I'm going to read, I'm going to read the resolution and then Heather, I'll have you say something. Okay, so the resolution is whereas the Traverse Area District Library wishes to apply for a youth literacy grant through the Dollar General to assist in purchasing and funding literacy kits, and whereas TADA is seeking a grant contribution of, wow, eight thousand dollars, now therefore be resolved that the TADA board submits, supports submission of an application to the Dollar General for eight thousand dollar grant to assist in funding literacy kits. Okay, Heather?
Yes, thank you. Heather Brady, Marketing Manager. So this came about because we meet with the librarians regionally a few times a year. That happened a few weeks ago. We meet with the TCAPs librarians, the NMC librarians, and we just talk about what's going on. And one of the things that's going on, unfortunately, is that reading scores are worse than they've ever been. The third, reading scores are worse than they've ever been. The third grade reading scores are the absolute worst. It's not a hundred percent surprising because of COVID. These are children that started school during COVID and, you know, they're lagging because of their experience. So we talked with the librarians for some ideas on what we might do over the summer because we don't want them to fall farther behind. And one of the ideas we came up with is perhaps we could develop more family literacy kits that we could have on the bookmobile and that we could get out more into the community over the summer to help families read together and encourage more reading at home. So because we're budget sticklers and we did not have that in the budget for this year, I started looking for some ways to get those funded. This grant is an option. We do meet the parameters of it. And the statement that you have is a long-winded way of saying that the board gives Mary Lee permission to sign the application because there's a spot in it where the board president has to approve the application.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to resolve that the board submits this application to Dollar General for eight thousand dollars.
I'll support it.
Okay, discussion? Sam?
A question, because I was reviewing the website here, because I think it's a great idea. Anytime we get foundation support and that kind of thing, it's great. It looked like there were three tiers, adult literacy, family literacy, and youth literacy. But we're going for the youth literacy dollars, but it's kind of a family literacy idea?
Yeah, so that's a little bit of a timing issue. The other two had earlier deadlines. So we're going to target the youth literacy. We can make a strong case for the kids under that program, but there will be adult literacy combined because, of course, as the parents read with the children, it's good for them as well. But we will frame the application as it being primarily for youth literacy.
Jennifer, this is a very quick question. Does that apply, if, if we're approved for the grant, does it commit TADA to expending library funds in a matching way or anything like that?
No.
No?
No. No, it doesn't actually.
But we are going to spend this money regardless, right? If we don't get this grant, we still would-
I'll figure out a way to make it happen.
Well, certainly we wish you luck with the application.
Have we, we saw it and gotten Dollar General money before?
Not to my knowledge. I've never applied for it since I've been here, so this is, I can only speak to since 2020.
Is it newly offered in the community by Dollar General or is this something we've never gone for?
It's an ongoing program that they do. We do qualify because we're about eight miles from the Dollar General in Chums Corner, and you only have to be within a fifteen-mile radius of a store.
Any other questions for Heather? Are you ready to vote? Okay, here's my quick, this is not a money-
Wait, Susan is.
Oh, Susan.
Thanks, Mary Lee. Heather, I just had a quick question. This would be used by all the members in our district, correct?
They would be kids that would go into the TADA collection and any of our member libraries or our branches could use them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And then what's next? Okay, next is public comment.
Hi, Heather Brady, Marketing Manager. Um, thank you for your, uh, deep discussion today. It was a lot of hard work, I know. But I just wanted to mention that Monday night, we had a preview showing of Free For All, which is an independence, independent lens movie about public libraries and their history in this country. It's an amazing movie. I've cried through it twice now. And the full version will be on PBS on April twenty ninth, so please mark your calendars to watch that. I mention it now because of your earlier discussion and there's a significant part of that movie that talks about the role of public libraries in conjunction with civil rights. And there's a portion of the movie that shows the days, the dark days of this country when only white people were allowed to use public libraries. There's a part in the movie where people are standing there and barring the doors to anybody else. It's very sad, um, and very moving, so.
Could you say the name of the movie?
It's called Free For All, The History of Public Libraries in the U.S. Um, and I believe the premiere date is April twenty ninth on PBS.
Thank you. Okay, any trustee comment? Oh, Susan?
Thanks, Mary Lee. Um, I just, uh, in the last couple of days, found out that for the Grand Traverse Regional Community Foundation, I'm now on their DEIJ, uh, Fund Council. So I encourage folks to look at for the last couple of years what the community foundation has funded in that area. This past year, they funded about fifty-five, uh, thousand dollars worth of grants, most of them no more than twenty-five hundred each. And it may be that that would be a way for us to get some funding for some of the things that we've talked about today. And the other thing I want to run by folks is that I also had an opportunity to be interviewed by Our Detroit Magazine about, uh, insufficient cancer care for people with disabilities. And I'll be talking to Michelle about some ways that maybe we can get a little bit more outreach on that. That's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for that information. Seeing no one raising their hands at this time, I'm going to, um, move that we adjourn. Someone make that motion, please?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion carries. Have a good evening, everybody, and look out for those icicles.